And if everyone will stand, do the invocation.
Dear Lord, I just thank you for this day. Just thank you for watching over us and giving us this opportunity. Being that we were able to celebrate yesterday, the freedoms that we've had for so many years here in the United States. I just pray with all the folks that were impacted by the terrible shooting. And Lord, that you'll just be with our country during this unrest and very difficult times. And Lord, that you'll be in peace and in peace with me. You're the stay as we make these decisions, as you say. Again, for me, I can't repeat.
I think that the U.S. will have to, I don't know, the states of America. I think they do it, they publish the same. It's one nation, three states. It is, oh, thirteen justices.
Okay, first, uh, you did it. We have a recognition of a son, Palmer, by Tom, yes. Thank you.
Afternoon, bachelors. Um, you, that's right, uh, I just want to thank you. Want to see this, uh, I want to introduce you. If you not know, um, John Paul, Sean is an employee at the golf course. He is also, um, special Olympian. He last month was selected as part of Team Mexico. Comes to Florida to, uh, represent the golf portion of the USA Games for Special Olympians. Uh, I'm lucky enough to go with him, um, as the Team Mexico Golf Coach. There were three golfers as part of a nineteen half league delegation from the state of New Mexico participating in sports. That were, you know, baji, ball, bowling, uh, swim, I mean, track and field, uh, as well as golf. So, um, Sean on got to play, uh, in level five, which is the highest level, uh, of the Special Olympics golf competition. Uh, it's individual. He plays his own golf ball for eighteen holes. It was four rounds, so seventy-two holes, uh, with heat indexes ranging from a hundred and two to a hundred and five. So it was pretty brutal, pretty brutal. I, you know, it, you spend a week in Orlando and it makes you thankful to live in the state of New Mexico without the humidity. Um, but Sean played four rounds, uh, ended up in Division Four and ended up taking home the gold medal, which, you know, is pretty spectacular seeing that, that he was even selected, uh, to be on Team Mexico. But to actually go down there and compete like he did and take on the gold was pretty spectacular. So, so I'm presenting Sean Palmer as part of, uh, San Juan County.
Would you like to say a few words about your experience?
Well, they can come to you guys, you know, everything you guys done. And it's, it's kind of fun to, I assume, this is the first time in the USA down in Atlanta, Florida. It's, it's a little, um, tough, the court, it's a little tougher, but it, it was a little challenging to me. But I, I joined it under, it's like, I have one under and then it's like, I represent the San Juan County and then, like, golf course and, it's a special, it's, I used to play there, you know, um, I haven't. Cause I know that, uh, this time, if you can get a program, you know, you have this, you have this. So I need, you, you want.
Oh, we're getting some.
Uh, sorry, what, pardon me, sir. Yeah. So I, he's, he's.
I'm taking care of you.
Sure. I'll say, remember, remember, sure. Bye, guys. Here. Now, he. Yeah. 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 It's awesome. I'm good. I'm good. That's good. And then. I was, what is, two, three, two, three. Yeah. Perfectly, it's kind of like you, you did, uh, for some of this, my last years, I'm, I'm performing. Then we'll be, we'll be, uh, uh, your, uh, for sure. Thank you for all the, the work, if we can, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next one, uh, that's from our, our. Yeah. Just, uh, important, uh, two, uh, also, but we're done. Uh, can, he's in, I guess, I would, I don't know. I'm not, it's for the sea, because before, it's never been, look back, always be happy, put on. It's really, really beautiful. Like a red, yeah. And, uh, let's, yeah. I'm gonna go back, actually, but cars, uh, yeah, I'm ready. And I think, yeah, I think it's, it is, it's a, yeah. He gets, yeah, 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 yes, of course. And, uh, good, stupid. I think, you know, he's, uh, like, I said, I'll, I said, uh, that's a lot, that's a lot. That's a, yeah. That's. Oh, that's her. Pretty much. Actually, just, yeah. 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 Three, two, three. Okay. Okay. My second, uh, every time, you too, uh, well, she's, you, you, so, so, yeah. I mean, you, you, you know, the, the shirt, uh, I'm gonna change. The, the house, uh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, yeah, I'm, 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 yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so y'all, uh, we do that, we can get, exciting, people, you know. Better than, thank you. I wish, yeah. I'm checking on this, I didn't, uh, I don't know. Okay. So, yeah, first, just, okay, all right. Hi. That was, three, no, she carries it. This is consent, you know, we have six times on that bar. Or one consideration, special events, remain other point, two, two consideration, people, regular, eight minutes remain, four point two. Two, three consideration, people, I've written in, it's June fifteen, twenty point two. Four consideration, people, uh, of that point, maybe, five, please, for, for distancing, because of those. Five consideration, people, uh, like, I think, you just check that, we're freaking, resolution, two, if you ask me, if you ask one. I consider, people, uh, I have support, I need for non-ear, that's space, two, house, even, please. Right, a motion, you prove, you just, since then, so, so, yeah. It's a, second, I favor, uh, those, three, no, finish, great. All right, thank you, and for John, into you, I do, this, and consideration, people, for mission, and a point, two, twenty, two, two, seven, uh, uh, this. I can't, yeah, 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 I'm sure, process, you can prove for your, just end up to, like, for the, point, point two, take my, program. Uh, use this, uh, sustain, our, uh, teams, which I have, I think, my team, my team, my team, uh, many, that's, uh, uh, as well as our system, as a, as a, uh. Okay, uh, would have been very, uh, the past four, many years, and I was, seen that ones. Uh, this year, you'll see that, we're, pushing, probably, one, seven, like, to go here, and talking, hold back, true, to wish this out, wait, you want, uh, move back, wait. I reckon, now, or that, it, here, because of, fire, where, it's, they, like, I don't know, it's, uh, managers, uh, are, so, their application. And that, uh, great, so, I, uh, jump out, uh, I'm sure, and, we'll see, we got it. Uh, we actually, you know, well, uh, 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 we're not here, uh, I think, I would, so, I think, a lot more. So, uh, that's my question, uh, any, any, like, uh, just, just, for, like, the questions, or, come on. Anybody that, that's, recording, uh, on the, uh, thirty, ten, you know, rolling, this, this, uh, yeah, sure. Uh, so, programs continue, with, uh, uh, the boys, or, uh, in the summer, actually, we, most of us, or, or, most of us, uh, across the state.
It's not as as a as a allegation of most the parts of this um there had been as I can anything else which is that the people get like the project. So first step uh in where anyway, it's maybe you can speed up should actually be back. Okay, that's it's obviously the very first step. Um that beyond we'll do exactly which is so whatever you you don't what maybe your appropriate level of part review. You know, we'll send these ground for us to and come up with comes up. Um, you know, beyond just uh, please we go uh uh, yes, it was specific. And I must just some kind of idea of where about any what kind of person say so. This this is a plus that this is a um uh that we itself will be time to serve or come on my floor. I guess.
Yeah. And at this time we should come it's on this one. This role. Then to have a question.
Right. Okay. I'm sure for us now. I may force you to I'm sorry.
I'm versus I'll do uh nine those three hundred you see, you right it to have to write should have locations.
Absolutely. And here it's a new issue. Uh, at at your aware, uh part of twenty one and request on next short report. That was a but authorized it's a lot of content. Um, okay, that twenty six five one billion uh was allocated to uh um, James four quarters month. Um, so I was directly for for the figure between million to thousand thirty dollars. Um, that was like if you're dollars, I do receive use average to per capita anything from long and we just received I'm set now. I last year twenty two. Um, really, my son, I'm from down nation. Um, we're no, but they're all both do uh I'm taking back that now, kid. Um, order just to eat a bite. But it helped me or that uh very good at after us. So there may be um, be happily follow but it's yes, we are so like the final by the three. I said, mate, like it's um talking to me about your job. I had a mission allocated low between the ninety two and ninety ten dollars. I was allocated a lot of I'm sure uh I'll expect I see that's why I'm not pretty big. Um, the only three of them yeah, I mean it's in literally, yes. I would I'd like to turn up adaptation or or supply chain issues. As we look and I have F F O on apple shirt. I mean, certainly there's those issues. Um, one part this that was the authority one is hard to the uh submission water. Um, initially, I allocated uh a six million one, I think, right? Yeah. Now, we do hire I'm making progress engineer to um, start that that's a problem. We're evaluating yes, we that roster. There he misses uh on one ten million. And so uh, you only that that one I think recently we go back to get we mix and it works part of and so uh we evaluated and uh uh, because to carry on with them. I allocated I'd always do um but the category trigger calls every day. Um, I'm not trying to get there. Um, even the there's what is that? And so because of that, we can allocate uh those dollars for the in front of that over to the submission. So for the end that that's the first um I know request that born. Second, uh we have uh a little aware of three year planning. Now, I mean, have um various uh with license. Cycle. On the ready bridges seven twenty one hundred bridge seventy two hundred sixty three five hundred five hundred all three years. Five replacements. Uh, yeah. If we've uh a lot of money, but everybody is really nice to ensure that that's um, we need there's like in three uh uh, especially with that runs start in insurance insurance dollar or state funds. It's all uh, actually sure that that it could be placed uh through um, best to be harsh folks. Right. Our forwards about adding actually directly authorized their mark. It's an art product. He was, we marked out with other ones. When using for their project. It's a word thing. And it's authorized uh uh, use hard dollars. Pressing um world well down official. Three stuff designed for or thereafter. That will was for CD these. And last we uh we look at as um really work and that the addition of those act. And I don't write others but now we're looking at this stuff. Called posting I'm stressed um there's if it's um I think this that we is not all as a result of it. And so kind of that um because you another yeah, okay. And similar to this. Um, then uh, it actually they identify here in ninety worst. Um, it's always specific passing things that's all within accounting. It all on your others. The uh the orders uh, the internal starting for thirty four uh proceed uh all we equate as what it is. I saw there you only I try again because it's this is on um the cap of position. How or pose in can you do it? Is that the exact name of program? I was so it is um we would say those that works hundred hours from during during to uh for you to like um, and back through six hundred and that was higher today. Um, they they were and they every muscle total of about thirty and that everybody for uh the gym or some of similar to that of the several um, any that was hired up there. It's you need to I would that question. Um, I want well aware of the roles issued. It's very clear um they do every day. Yes, um volunteers that was included. And that's that allows um, we eat uh same as we that kind of we have also have each one dedicated by those I think the and so we same time sure just like sort of is that something like that? The package that we got not true additional time for I would use our first you have ours able to personally ask additional dollars or to the category. I wish I know I'm okay. Twenty five that is the market. Um, as if you want to just really sheet that some of you all if you in class through any adjustments and then the added I think just um just how you um this is one point one. So now it is it's 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 thing. Which is this? Well, that we still actually probably can. Um, and so I will since was pre-acting this uh agenda and I wanted for it's about tracking those I second the condition to be or stick and then uh way to three two
Yeah. If we it's and I feel you you want you can move all three things. I forget um, do that something but you're
it's on the so so now the is it you can okay. That's sure. There is there's a um that I um exactly that yeah, but we we um the result is that so at this I want everything but um that's actually we are this will uh um instead of the one person um, so so it's that outside of that I and that's what enough to do I do like and this I which is more I always like something this is it's for for to all right. I'm sure I've so I'm sorry. You know, I'm sorry. We take a this was that something just far as it so uh, oh wait. This um is all by my supposed to correct uh it's like because like we have something.
Yes. That's it. At this point we good. So
I'm sure all three be uh I once I try you um actually well
and right like that's here three minutes there's much this story.
Thank you. I'm sure well you have due to next inspection centers. I we fired everybody coming to the to jail and to make sure that the conditions um are so I it might request to uh, the last important to point was I maybe start this
We all okay.
Uh, I'm sure it's uh, it's obviously have forty we need three commissioners to make so get you
Okay. It's right now. Just so let's tell the you say really yeah. Yeah. That this date yeah. Go ahead. I heard like just reason um every year don't you my I be supervisor uh same thing. I'm big but what do you need to do that? Okay. I thank you. I know I'm yeah. Taking care of I will holiday possibly that's um happy work for fire parts here. I'm major I it's I thought I was here. You person on other place that uh this time I'm so and everybody this we I we sure I'm create doctor or later like these person please they were just situation. I appreciate that. Um, just the process already process one day box here. Uh, we gave you both the published that the first page first type like next of and then twenty seven or thirteen you do first um this same uh makes there thank you comment try now um listen to this I that's happy that I'm but it's I'm separate this I saw two one it's well um you the effort to receive that so this text which was two I on your so I I for you like really since that that so I also and nineteen to be consideration. I it's um I it same on I with um I things that should mission I was taken light but they process slide when I pick um in the rise you and call this eight five and so many is gonna replace the just line of needle. But I prices was yeah. Some pressure and pass um number one hundred thirty um you doesn't not twenty four just twenty nine eight post take turns not thirty all one part of I get on so just make this thank you receive this for just um then for both things by the dollar take there's two because I they few take actually states three for working on actual um say and and perfect of seems very that so actually so you do change means I not that I like I plan people is you came I'm station bigger a that's you I have but all so not um I so especially you now can as the then I will start there. Turn out the trans but so contribute to all see all producing they check or you all so so they all that or this something on for the questions I I like you this this you that yes this is fine. Oh, this that you that is there they will to that so you be this so you fight so that jump it's there I see the trade that's so it that there which go go hopefully I I think to most or same was I can need before also also it reflects that I was sure in that second one so that all I did I don't see any I'm sorry I tell really I provide things I price this say come I get session or yes session um first you it's fun to this is and I um we press most when you must so see that uh this I didn't oh okay. Sorry. All okay. Okay. Good job. All right. Okay. All right. I report missions that they don't like uh I that tape on right now. All rain even hasn't I that by um you have three that's seventy five um six or right just one decide will be sorry taking another it's now it's okay. Uh yeah. So process last so I that's it's tomorrow six five three lots of also past hundred next begin fifty seven be wait such um but push there. Uh, we was supposed to everybody it's um our milk we um that firstly the rest there in that we had good um I think she was the other next that the we also so I you can measure it one I the scene okay on we all think I chat I they should I do this Use. That. The. Project. The. And. Run. It. And. It's. What? Other. Um. Really. Four. Grouse. Here. That. Was. A. Another. It's. It's. Twenty. Me. Me. You. The. Things. For. That. You. Take. Those. So. That's. All right. Are there. What's. On. Yes. That. Just. Uh. The. Like. The. And. You. Just. That's. That's. We. Be. There. So. Two. Water. With. That. Bring. That. Um. Some. You. Up. Then. You. By. The. Refresh. There. It's. It goes. The. With. The. Trash. Your. Hands. It's. A. Little. It's. That. You. Of. Some. These. It's. Never. On. So. They. The. Our. Team. So. We. That's. The. Drive. Of course. You. Have. The. Prince. Rain. Last. And. That. I think. I think. From. Then. You. Really. And. How. Did. My. Nice. Three. Um. That's. But. I. Remember. For. Thank. You. For. That. I. Was. Like. That's. What. That. I. That. All right. So. I wonder. From. This. Time. To. Like. Comment. Person. Missed. And. To. No. 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 To. The. Good. Fun. You. Come. To. You. Rap. That. It's. Be. Here. I. Want. You. Come. Come. Here. We. You. We. Have. Tired. Back. I'm. Trying. To. So. The. Working. On. Social. Service. Center. To. County. Uh. The. Shower. Hygiene. Stations. Repair. Of. Course. And laundry. All. Food. As well. I'm. I. Instead. Of. Message. Change. On. Our. So. Something. Going. Plus. To. For. Officer. To. Make. Sure. You. More. I'm. Trying. To. Now. But. It's. Good. You. Just. There. I. And. Our. Project. Doing. It's. So. I. Just. Thank. You. In. The. And. Down. You. Heard. It. Was. Was. Elaborated. Me. Was. How. We. We. Like. Two hundred. And sixty five. Counties. The. City. generosity. Citizens. Of. Fifteen hundred. And. And. Our warehouse. Probably. Well. Just. In. Mind. That. Was. So. I. Do. Children. Hard. To. You. Well. Then. So. You. Do. And. I. Love. This. Here. Does. That. It. Here. That's. You. So. This. Comments. All right. You. Don't. Go. There. Right.